Good evening, I will call this meeting to order. If you'll kindly rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Allington, Carmody.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laughlin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tata.
Here.
Testa.
Moreau.
Here. All right, I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3G.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is unanimous. We move on to item four, items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Number five, public question and answer. Anyone with a question for the council? Sir?
My name is Brian Monroe. My wife and I, we've been in town for over 25 years. And we both do insurance. And probably like yourselves and everybody here, over the last 18 months, you probably have reached out to your own insurance agent asking, what is going on with my rates? The state of Connecticut has seen over a 40% rate hike amongst all carriers over the last 18 months. A lot of that contributing on the home side to the various catastrophic events we're seeing throughout the country. On the auto side, it's a very simple cause. A lot of it has stemmed from the pandemic, the increase in the amount of reckless driving that's been out there. And statistically, on our end, we're seeing it day in and day out. Reckless driving is just profoundly just increasing day after day. And the biggest underlying cause is the amount of red light runners that we're seeing on the roads today. And it's really becoming to the point, it's frustrating. I actually drive, and I'm like, their time is more valuable than my life. And it's really sad today. So, you know, as I was saying a second ago, statistically, it's just growing to the point that it's uncontrollable. And I have the highest regard for law enforcement, but they can't be everywhere within town checking on us as drivers. We've all gone to DMV, we've taken tests, we know the rules of the road, but we don't abide to them. So I'm here, talking to the council tonight. I want Wallingford to be a leader in the state. I've heard so many times on the news that these other towns are looking at the red light cameras. But I'm hoping that we take the initiative and put it, you know, into action. Because unless these people see what is going on and feel it financially in their pockets, they're going to continue to do this. And younger drivers are more prone to watching everybody else on the road, and they're following them by an example. So the more they see people running red lights, they're going to run red lights. And it's just going to, you know, create this epidemic even more so. So again, I'm just here to talk about it because I'm in the industry, I'm seeing it. I'm seeing the victims on the other side and what happens to them. Because you're driving down the road and all of a sudden you get hit by somebody, you're not prepared for it. So those actions tend to be a lot more substantial in nature. So I'm hoping that you guys can actually take it back and consider it. And I could assure you, based on the amount of people that you see on the road driving, any cost associated with implementing red light cameras are going to be paid for by these knuckleheads, as I like to refer to them. But I do thank you for your time, I just wanted to bring this, I actually sent an email about it as well, but hopefully you guys will address it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, would you like to?
If I may. So the statute that was passed at the legislature does require a local ordinance to be adopted for the implementation of red light cameras. I've had a few meetings with the police department. We're preparing draft ordinance to bring to the council. And we've met with, we've seen presentations from a few vendors. The way the programs are structured is that the fines collected do in fact exceed the cost of the equipment and the monitoring that comes along with it. So there's, it ends up being worthwhile. That the fines collected will exceed, or are projected to exceed the cost of the equipment that gets installed and the monitoring that goes along with it.
Just one, statistically from our side, we're actually seeing that trend. So they're planning, the insurance industry is planning for more rate hikes. I'm just, you know, like you guys, I'm just, you know, I'm an insurance payer too. So I'm watching my rates go up, and it's just because of these actions of other people that just don't have a care for the rules of the road. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Bill Comer from Broadview Drive. Last fall, myself and a couple of people, taxpayers, were bringing the Doolittle basketball courts to the council and the administration's eyes and awareness. I believe that there were some pictures that were supplied to the town council as well as to the mayor as far as the bubbling of the upper court. And we were aware that the lower court was stripped and redone. Since that time, has anybody gone back down there and looked at it, in particular the mayor?
Mayor?
Yep, I've had occasion to visit both of those courts and the adjacent tennis court. The court on the other street, his name escapes me now, it's not Wall Street. Okay, the Wall Street Court certainly was redone and appears to be fine. There, I did observe maybe one handful of bubbles on the other court that's more central in the park. So, and the contractor that did the work has stood by it. So we have no reason to doubt, I believe the coating has a 10-year warranty. So we will continue to monitor, see if the winter had any effect on the coating as well.
So the reason why I'm bringing this up is because myself and other concerned taxpayers have been still going down there. There's a 14-foot crack, 14 feet, in the Wall Street basketball court. The surface failed numerous amounts of time, they stripped it. They put their new adhesive down, and the top one wasn't going to bubble, but it did. And now you've got a 14-foot crack in a brand-new post-tension concrete. So my point is, or my question is, is, I can only speak for myself, but it feels like we're being patronized and ignored for doing someone else's job. Because the town engineer, I would have assumed, would have looked at this. As all I did or want as a taxpayer is get the company out here to answer the questions. Because we have no problem throwing another $160,000 over at Pragnum Park, plus Doolittle Park, plus wherever we're going to do these, but we haven't even addressed the problem. Now, the same company, there was issues in other states with the same thing. As a matter of fact, there's bird bathing, where the water's collecting, which I believe Council Tata had brought up about the Doolittle Park tennis courts. That's still happening. And there's also the same collection of water on both those courts. I'm not a paid town engineer, I'm not an engineer. But we have three of them that are full-time employees in this town. But yet the whole thing has been ignored. And also, that whole back section of that basketball court, because of the frost, heaved three inches. Which I think I said, because of the water problem, you're going to have that anyway. So we didn't even get into the heat of the summer. So I guess my question is, is, when are we going to get some definitive answers and some accountability? I could care less about a warranty. That's like us going out and buying a brand-new Maserati and spending $360,000 on a Maserati, and we want it for the showroom condition, but yet we drive it out in the rain and the paint blows off. Well, we'll send it to Mako, we'll get it repainted. And it's repainted, next storm, paint comes off again. Then we find out that the frame cracked. But we got a $360,000 Maserati. Looks good on paper, but there's a warranty. At what point does the lemon law, or some of these department heads, or even the administration, held accountable? I could care less about the warranty. Warranties failed. That was one of my questions.
Let me respond to that one first of all. So when you say you're ignored, so the contractor came back and made some adjustments, which didn't work, and then came back and resurfaced it. So that to me seems like the opposite of ignored. It seems like the administration made an issue with the contractor, who then came and remedied the situation.
That's not the case. What happened was-
Well, no, that is the case, you just don't believe that the remedy worked, correct?
The case was that the taxpayers had to bring this up three times. We had to send you pictures, and it all got signed off for them. Matter of fact, one of the members of the public wanted to go attend one of these meetings to hear exactly what the cause was. To this day, we don't know what the cause was. In the fall, we had the gentleman from Park and Rec sit there, and he told us it was an anomaly. And they also denied the top one failed, but it is, it's failing today. So we were told, and matter of fact, Chairman, you said, does anything ever make you happy? Your words to me, okay? And I said yes, when the taxpayers get what we're paying for. And here we are again, four months later, same problem, but now it's worse. So how difficult is it to get the company in here and find out what happened?
Well, I think if the company's willing to remedy the problem, I'm not sure what having them in here would address. It would address your curiosity towards what's the cause of the issue, right? But my concern is seeing that the basketball courts are playable and that the issue was addressed, which is I think what they tried to do last time.
In my world, if this was a contractor that worked for me, I would never hire him, I wouldn't even let him back on the property. Because obviously, they didn't know the problem, they couldn't rectify the problem. And either they're ignoring it, or we just paid them in full, and they go away scot-free. And it didn't happen on one, because we're hearing conflicting stories. The stuff that they used on the top was different than the bottom, then it wasn't. Then they had to strip the lower one, which they do, and it's still bubbling. And then they do the top one, they don't have to do the top one, but they fix the bubbles in that supposedly, and it's bubbling up again. That's totally irresponsible, and it's unacceptable. So I don't know why this administration, in my opinion, and the town council doesn't want, it holds them accountable. And as a taxpayer, I want some type of level of accountability, and I'm not seeing it. Because that crack's been going on for a month, a month. We take pictures of it every four or five days, and it just gets worse and worse and worse. I shouldn't have to do that, you have a town engineer. I asked for copies of progress pictures, never had any. Inspection reports, there weren't any. Asked to see any post-tension torque reports, nothing, nothing at all. What do we pay a town engineer for? If a town engineer can oversee and be accountable for a small project like this, in my opinion, I don't want any part of that town engineer. Because when you have a bigger project with bigger concerns and bigger liability, I go back to the small ones that they couldn't handle. And if you'll let me indulge for one more, because I went over my 15-minute time frame, I appreciate it. Mayor, as far as the sidewalk inspections go, how does that work and what is the policy? For cracks, elevation lifts?
The engineering department is in charge of reviewing the sidewalks periodically and assigning work to be done based upon the condition that's observed.
So if the town engineer, in your opinion, is driving down the road, is it part of their job? If they happen to see a sidewalk that might be lifted or concerned, that they would make note of it and you would hope that they would bring it up, right?
I generally believe that while people are driving, they should be attentive to their driving. And if they're out doing sidewalk inspections, then they're out doing sidewalk inspections. Now, they might drive to get to a location where there's a sidewalk inspection that they're going to perform. However, I prefer they pay attention to the road if they're driving.
Okay, so if I'm inspecting, I don't know, 165 Center, if you don't even know if that address exists, and I'm the town engineer, would it be logical for me to keep going, or does it just end at 165? If 163, and then 161, do you canvass the area where you are? Or are you just based upon one complaint, it says 165, and that's it, you're done?
So my discussions with the engineering department are typically about what the current town-wide sidewalk maintenance system is. We have 13 districts, and I guess in 30 years, they've just gotten through District 13. We're re-examining that system. My discussions have not gotten so granular with them as to whether or not, when they stop to view the condition of a sidewalk, how many feet in either direction they walk. But I can certainly find that out.
And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because it's very important. I had asked for my area to be inspected, and I had to be particular, exactly what the exact address was, and they never came out. Because I said, if you walk halfway down our street, you'll probably find a couple dozen. But most importantly, I asked what the parameters were. And I even forwarded to the mayor, and to this day, I never got an answer. Is it a half an inch, is it a quarter of an inch, is it an inch? Because I don't want to waste anybody's time. But through ADA, there is a specification, but I couldn't get it from anybody, including the ADA compliance coordinator. So there was a complaint at 665 Center Street, I believe it was somewhere around July. And then there was another one a couple houses up. Now, after both of those inspections, and directly across the street from 665, a woman fell, and she, in my opinion, she was substantially injured. Directly across the street from that was where inspected. And then, somebody, I don't know, because I asked for a copy of who actually reached out to the engineering department to say, hey, how did it happen? There's no log as to who filed the complaint. So my point is, if you're doing it, why don't you actually canvass the area to save, number one, the taxpayers' money, and obviously potentially further lawsuits? And the reason why, the other reason why I'm bringing this up is because every year, I bring up the fact that we used to have a sidewalk inspector. I think it was like $90,000 a year. And every year, I begged this town council and the administration to put that person back on. Because their whole role was to make a list and inspect them, and they would also inspect things like the basketball court. They would sign off on it, it just makes complete sense. But the reason why we won't do it is because, like originally stated, because what I say makes sense, but we just stand up here and get patronized. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
How you doing? I'm one of the Hidden Brook residents, I know it's on the-
And I'm sorry, so I know who you are, but your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Anthony, 7 Hidden Brook Lane, Anthony Rosati.
Thank you.
I know it's on the agenda today, I'm not sure in what capacity. I'm just hoping to leave here with some sort of idea of when it's going to be put to bed. You know, not to sound like a broken record between myself and my neighbor Nick, who spoke last time. Three years for streetlights, four years for a street sign. We're going on our eighth year, we know the plow has been the issue. And it's just frustrating, because we don't know what is needing to get done. Developer says either one thing, or he's all done in his eyes, there's a disagreement with the town. Town says something else. If it's small, why isn't it done yet? If it's more involved, what's being done to push to get to a resolution? I mean, I know Nick spoke last time about the ice at the end of the street. You know, we were sitting out there waiting for the bus one morning, the bus slides 10 feet to pick the kids up. It's kind of crazy, you know, enough's enough. I'm just hoping to leave here with some sort of idea when it's going to finally be put to bed. I mean, eight years, forget about the nine-year extension, whether that applies or it doesn't. Five years is too long. You know, we all bought our houses, going on our eighth year now. So enough's enough, just hoping to get some answers one way or another. But, thank you.
So just to be clear, so the capacity's on tonight is just an update from the administration, which we'll hear in a minute, as far as what they have going on. You know, we had a discussion about this at the last meeting. I know Janice Small was working on, you know, what the next step is going to be in terms of, you know, what other resolution we could see. I think the problem's a little bit complicated, but I'll defer to the administration on where we go from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, moving on to number six, discussion of old business. So Mr. Farrell, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
Corporation Council Small has requested with the Planning and Zoning Commission to be placed on the agenda in executive session to discuss legal options of where to go on Hidden Brook.
Okay.
And hopefully she will be on their next agenda.
Okay, perfect. Sir, if you wanted to reach out to Attorney Small, she may be able to give you some more insight into what the particulars are, you know, what the town potentially could do. Mayor, do you have an update on community pool?
Yes, so the bid specifications are near final. We, I do have a timeline, forgive me. But the bid should be published either at the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And we expect that we'll be in a position to open the bids on April 10th.
Okay, perfect. And Mayor, an update on the town building maintenance assessment?
As of last meeting, the drafts had been returned to the vendor, and we're just waiting to get finals back.
Perfect, thank you very much. The fire department study, I spoke to the vendor today, actually. They have all their documentation that they need from the town, so they should be getting in touch with the fire department to begin gathering data and putting together the study. Onto item seven, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider an act on an ordinance appropriating 3.4 million for the I-91 wastewater pump station replacement project and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes of the town in the amount not to exceed 3.4 million to finance said appropriation. Mr. Anwick, if you'd like to approach. Good evening, if you could both introduce yourself for the record, please.
Neil Anwick, General Manager for Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions.
Peter Horneck, Engineer Planner with Water and Sewer Divisions.
Thank you. Good evening, did you want to take questions, or did you have something to present to us?
We do have a brief PowerPoint, I think explaining the project.
Okay, perfect.
And then we'd be happy to answer any questions with that. Technology. Okay, so this is a replacement of the I-91 wastewater pumping station. I always like to start with an agenda, call me a type A engineer. We'll go over the location, we'll go over the existing pumping station information and metrics. We'll talk about the project goals and objectives, the proposed pump station design and metrics, some funding and timeline. So the location of the I-91 pump station, the mailing address, although we don't have a post office mailbox, is 1030 New Rock Hill Road. It is immediately adjacent to Interstate 91 South and New Rock Hill Road. You can see the red dot. And then here is a Google map of the same. So it does serve the I-91 sewer shed. And so the pump station was originally constructed in 1972, when the rest area was built, and then was sized for current residential dwellings as well as future residential dwellings. So let's talk about some of the existing matrix, excuse me, metrics. It was installed in 1972, so at this point, it has been running for 52-plus years, 24/7/365. Does have a wet well volume of 1,010 gallons. It does have two containment basins of 5,000 gallons each. I will point out that the I-91 pump station is located in the Mackenzie Reservoir Watershed. There are two constant-speed pumps, each are 10 horsepower, and the design point of the pumps is 250 gallons per minute. And we do have an emergency standby generator of 45 kilowatts. Give you a little site layout here. So from the top to the bottom, in the red box, is the two 5,000-gallon containment basins. Then highlighted in green is the 1,010-gallon wet well. Immediately downstream of that is the dry well, that is where the pumps are located. And then we do have a small building with a standby generator. Both the wet well and the dry well are essentially oversized manholes. Here's some pictures for you, so this is the I-91 pump station site looking south, with the containment basins in the foreground, the wet well and the dry well, and then the standby generator building in the back. And then you can see the overpass for New Rock Hill Road. Zooming in, that is the standby generator building with the interior fuel tank. The wet well is to the left, and that half-barrel is an exhaust fan, covering the exhaust fan. And then the dry well is in the foreground. Those are the two 5,000-gallon containment basins, looking north towards the I-91 rest area. And this is the dry well with the pumps. So as I did point out, it is essentially an oversized manhole with a Bilco hatch. And there is our 1972 circa 45-kilowatt standby generator. So let's talk about the project goals and objectives. Essentially, why did the Wallingford Sewer Division undertake this project? So address wet well surcharge conditions, particularly during precipitation events. There is a limit with the existing pump capacity as well as the pump station piping constraints. So the diameter of the piping. Increase the size and flow rate of the pumps. Existing pumps are constant speed, new pumps will be variable frequency drive. Increase the size of the containment tanks. 10,000 gallons is not that much, particularly during a precipitation event with inflow and infiltration. They will, and they will operate in a lead-lag configuration. Improved access for pumps for maintenance and repairs. So essentially, right now, if our maintenance repair technicians, AKA our mechanics, need to go out there, they're exposed to the elements, you know, they're in a tight confine. And then replace aging infrastructure beyond its expected life cycle. Increase reliability, reduce the maintenance, and reduce operating regular labor, overtime labor, and benefits, particularly during precipitation events. Given the limited capacity of the wet well as well as the containment basins, our staff is out there quite frequently during precipitation events, one inch or greater, running the VAC trucks 24/7. And we've done that for over 24 hours to avoid surcharge conditions. It is in the Mackenzie River Watershed, and then on top of that, then we would need to file paperwork with DEP if we do have surcharge condition. And then increase the capacity of the standby generator. So where are we going? What did we design? The wet well volume will increase by over 300%, or three times, to 3,700 gallons. The containment basin will also increase by over 3%, excuse me, 300% or three times, to 33,500 gallons. We will maintain two pumps, but they will double in size to 20 horsepower. And the design point of the pumps will also increase to 410 gallons per minute. And we will have a larger, modern generator, and it will be in a precast concrete building. So here is the proposed site layout, and just to give you some orientation, to the left in the purple oval is the existing pump station. To the right, all the way off the screen, is the I-91 rest area. So in the red, we have our two containment basins in a lead-lag configuration. Then we have in green our wet well, and then we have our standby generator. And then our pumps are going to be located in the new precast concrete building. So here is some profile pictures, or excuse me, schematics of the pump station building. Some elevations, you can see it is essentially a two-story building. The basement is below ground, and you can see that is where the pumps are located. And then, tough to see my mouse moving around, but this is the wet well, and then the pumps are located in an area more accessible for our mechanics. So how did we come up with 3.4 million dollars? So the construction phase estimate is 3,400,000. That includes contractor expenses, construction administration, contingency, and bonding expenses. There is an existing appropriation of 1,415,085 dollars. So the requested additional funding, 1,984- So the requested additional funding, 1,984,915, we rounded it up to 2 million dollars. But per the Comptroller's Office and our bonding attorney, the project appropriation request in front of the town council this evening needs to be for the full funding ordinance, regardless of what money you have existing or whether you're going to pay for that grants, loans, et cetera. So that is the request for the 3.4 million dollars. Design was March 2023 to October 2024. We did advertise the project November 14, 2024. The bid opening was January 21 of this year. Contract award, we are projecting for April, and then about a 12 or 13-month construction period starting in the summer. One of the logistical challenges with both water and wastewater is, is we have to keep the existing pump station running, accessible for our staff while we're building the new one, yards from Interstate I-91. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Mr. Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Neil. I'm just trying to figure out, you said the existing appropriation is 1.4, when was that approved?
Fiscal year 21, 22.
Okay, so, and that was 100% at that point?
Based on our, yeah, correct, so but, you know, so fiscal year 21, 22 was prepared really in January 21. We were just coming out of COVID. You know, so we've had some price increases, obviously, and then on top of that, you know, the design got a little more complicated as we got into it. One of the items that we've always prescribed to, and you know, like, whether, something I learned, quite frankly, from Mayor Dickinson is, is that you don't always want to go in with 100% of your funding upfront, because then the contractors know what you have. So we've always taken the approach to go in a little low with our initial funding, and then if we have to, come in and ask for more.
So are we, is that the stage that we're at? Because it's 100% of what was represented to us back in 21, 22, right? Full funding was 1.4 at that point.
Well, so our-
You're asking for 3.4 now.
Correct, and we've also spent some money on design since then.
Yeah, so I'm just trying, so is this it on that? This is, this is the number, this is out the door. So we essentially estimated half of what? Or is, is just an unanticipated increase in costs since 21, 22?
I think it's a common-
It's a big increase.
And I think it's a combination of both, I think I will be, you know, the Water and Sewer Divisions is very good at estimating horizontal projects, sanitary sewer projects, water main replacement projects. As part of the design process, our design engineer had an estimate as well. The construction costs were higher than that estimate. The market, particularly with unknowns as far as where material prices are going to go, contractors are couching their bets.
Okay, so what, is there anything we can, you know, because a lot of times we're appropriating, I just, you know, I can see a 20% variance, but this is 100% variance, so. I don't know, I hear a lot about what projects are estimated to be and what projects actually end up costing. I thank you for the information, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, anyone else in the council? Mr. Testa.
Thank you, good evening. I'm just curious about the, how is this, is this going to be town bonding? Or, I was always under the impression that, you know, you, the utility divisions maintain the reserve accounts to pay for things like this. Who's going to be paying the bonding on this? I'm for it either way, I just was curious how that would normally work, Mr. Center.
So it's, the debt will be issued because they're part of the town.
Right.
But every, all the principal and interest will be paid by the water.
That's what I assume.
Or sewer, whichever.
That would make sense. So theoretically, if you wanted to pay for this out of your bank account, you could. I'm not saying you could, you would be allowed to, but you're going to use your income stream to pay the bill.
Correct, the Sewer Division is responsible for the principal and the interest payments.
I mean, I think it's important that the public knows that, we're talking about the cost, we're talking about bonding, and people should understand that, you know, you guys cover your own expenses and that's, that's very important to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone else from the council? Oh, Mr. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, hi Neil. From a design perspective, what changed between 2021, when it was originally bonded, and the design specification from last year, is it the exact same thing or has it grown in scope?
I was, I mean, that's a tough question to answer, I think it grew in scope. I think this pump station is being, you know, was designed and being constructed to last another 40 to 50 years. You know, I mean, can you, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't involved with every design meeting, so.
I mean, I, I think part of it is, like we said earlier, that the original estimate was done, you know, a number of years ago, and, you know, there have been some design changes based on, you know, it's a very tight site, and there's going to be a lot of coordination with the state because of the, you know, I-91 rest area and the way it's positioned, literally, right adjacent to I-91.
Okay, just my-
And again, the market, you know, just has gone crazy. We had, we bid other projects recently, in the last couple of years, water main projects and whatnot, and just they came back quite a bit higher than what, you know, we had anticipated.
So it's not just an economy issue, though, it is a scope change, and there has been, you know, increased capacity, just as a, for instance, could have been factored into the new one, or?
I think so, I think, you know, so we put together a budget, and it's based on really a schematic at that time. And then once, and then once we get into it, you know, this was designed with our engineering staff, with our sewer division staff. You know, and eventually you have a discussion between what is a want and what is a need. You know, and that's where my role comes in. But, you know, the budget is put together for planning purposes. I mean, we had budget meetings with the mayor, we've had budget meetings with the director, I've been upfront. This is a skill that the Water and Sewer Divisions, I would like to get better at. You know, one of those aspects is through the town engineering department, we are looking to get an on-call engineer or engineers, particularly to assist the Water and Sewer Divisions for cost estimating. You know, but it is tough when you go into a project three or four years prior with just a schematic.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else in the council? Anyone in the public with any comments on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the ordinance appropriating 3.4 million for the I-91 wastewater pump station replacement project and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes of the town in an amount not to exceed 3.4 million to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
I vote yes, and so the motion is unanimous for the members present, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. And I believe you also did receive an email today about wastewater sludge piloting, feel free to reach out.
You could expect to hear from me.
Regards to Penelope.
All right, on to item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a transfer in the amount of $47,200 from regular salaries and wages, Fire Department, consisting of, A, a transfer in the amount of $15,000 from regular salaries and wages to maintenance of vehicles, B, a transfer in the amount of $10,000 from regular salaries and wages to maintenance of building and grounds, C, a transfer in the amount of $12,000 from regular salaries and wages to purchased services ambulance billing, D, a transfer in the amount of $7,500 from regular salaries and wages to continuing education and training, and E, a transfer in the amount of $2,700 from regular salaries and wages to telephone account, Fire Department.
Second.
Our motion is made in seconded. Good evening, Chief. So typically, items of sort of this smallish variety, we would put on the consent agenda, but because of the, some of the issues we had, you know, the discussions we've had previously with the Fire Department, and the fact that the money's coming from salaries, I was wondering if you'd just sort of fill us in on sort of the whole package here.
Yeah, that'd be my pleasure, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to you all. Jim Buck, Fire Chief, and with me.
Deputy Chief Mike Shaw.
So what we have is, we have a number of accounts, and I can review each one, where we are forecasting out an expenditure that will exceed our budgeted item. Most of them are repairs and, you know, things that are variable, you know, that we have very little control over. We were looking at, you know, an account where we had funding available that would not hit our forecast amount, and salary was one of those. And primarily because the Fire Chief position was open for the first two months of the fiscal year, and we now have a deputy chief opening, which will probably extend at least two months as well. So with that funding, that was sufficient to bring us here. As it relates to the salary item, we're at 71.15% of the fiscal year as of our last payroll, and we've spent 68.63%, so we're a full 3% under expectations where we are right now. So the funds are available, if you'd like, I can review each line item briefly. The maintenance of vehicles, you know, this is a product of having an aging fleet. I am thankful to the council and their prior efforts with past administration to ensure replacement of apparatus is done in a timely manner. The apparatus is on its way, as you know, and you've heard, fire apparatus takes between three to four years from the time the contract is signed until it's delivered. So we have replacement apparatus coming that will address this issue, but our maintenance costs have exceeded the forecast for this year. As relates to maintenance of buildings, you're probably also familiar that the Fire Marshal has been very proactive in inspecting all town buildings, getting out there, and we had a number of deficiencies within our own buildings that has caused us to incur additional costs over and above what was forecast. Item C, purchased services for ambulance billing, that is a good problem to have. It is a small percentage of the amount we bill that is part of the billing company's service fees. So we are billing more than forecast, which has caused an increase in fees. Item D, continuing education and training, very important for the department. We've seen a significant increase in state fire academy classes that have been requested and approved for our members' training. In addition to that, we have EMT classes, we have required paramedic certification licensure costs. So that has all combined to create a forecast overage. So rather than, you know, denying training to our members, we're seeking this transfer to encourage the training within our department. And item E is a utilities bill issue. I'm sure all members of the public can commiserate with increased utilities costs. In this case, it's related to Frontier, Verizon and Comcast increases.
Thank you very much, questions from the council? Okay, I guess you covered it, Chief, questions from the public? All right, I think we'll do a voice vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
On to number nine. All right, so this one is my item, the town council budget from last year was in your packet. Some adjustments that we're going to see to our budget, so the archiving, I believe, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've archived everything to 1984?
Yes.
Okay, and we have records dating back to the 60s?
1962, in my office.
Okay, so I guess the question is, do we want to continue and archive the balance of the stuff to 1962? Or are we comfortable with where we are, where we can strike this from the budget, number one? Number two, council expenses are not going to be $4,500, because we don't have any, we don't have a lot to pay for, but one of the things that the mayor and I had talked about is the potential of bringing in a recording secretary to make, take minutes in the meeting. The estimated cost across the board for the recording secretary for the year, per my discussion with Mr. Center, is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000. So that's something that I would like to put forward in next year's budget, is the recording secretary. I don't know that we need a full-time secretary just for the council, I think the minutes, between the minutes and what the clerk is doing now, I think is adequate. But I'll open it up for discussion if anyone has any questions or concerns on our budget before we move it forward. Mr. Fishbein.
Where are we with the indexing? Not that I think anybody uses the indexing anymore, but for those of you that don't know about the, my voice already carried.
Must be new here.
When we had a council secretary, one of her main functions was to create an index so that, you know, 10 years from now, if somebody was researching through minutes and things like that, you know, like the community pool, you'd be able to go to the index and see which particular meetings the council dealt with the community pool, or it appeared on agenda, so that you'd be able to adequately get educated as members of the council. I don't know where we are with that, and I just, I inquire.
Yeah, good question, so if you go on the town webpage now, all of our minutes are out there, and they are searchable by word in the way that they were archived, so you could type in "community pool" in the search field, and it'll give you every reference to your community pool in the minutes.
So one who is looking to do that research would be required to click on every set of minutes and word search each?
No, no, you would word search at the beginning of the minutes section, there's a search bar.
Okay, I will take a look.
It's, it's, um, very Google-ish in the way that you can, and then it'll bring you every reference to that word in the minutes. Okay. But check it out, and if you want to, yeah, if you want to, you know, look at something else, we certainly can. With regards to, oh, the other thing, while I have the floor, with regard to archiving. So there has been some discussion, and speaking with Jim Ha, about the potential of having a company for archiving townwide, so my thought was to not put anything in next year's budget for us, and then if they're, if it, we end up having a, you know, a vendor, we can move forward, although I don't know if we need all the records, say, back to the 60s, but I'm willing to hear your thoughts on it. Anyone else? Mr. Laffin?
What do you mean, like archive, like everything digitized?
That sounds like witchcraft. No, so I guess there's other departments with records that need to be kept for different reasons, and I think there was, there was some discussion about having a, like a, putting out a bid for a vending archive, or archiving vendor.
So are they going to like scan everything, that's what I'm saying, can we just search everything?
Right.
So I mean, I think I'd go back as far as I can, but, including the 60s.
Yeah, okay, that's fair, anyone else?
So I guess the question is, is how far back is usable data? You know, it's going to, obviously from the 1800s, I don't know that anybody's searching, you know, a council person from there, I think the 50s are viable, especially if we're looking at, you know, at our school system and why, why certain things were voted at that point in time, you know, we go back 50 to 70 years, but we set a date associated with, you know, let's say January or December 31st, 1949, and then everything before that is permanently archived on paper, correct?
Correct, so, but as far as I know, the only records we have date back to 1962, is that, is that accurate? There aren't any records that exist before then?
At least not in my office, there isn't, no.
Okay, so I think there's the land records, but that's it, I don't believe there's any, like, official council or whatever the- like, official council or whatever the governing body was at that point, records.
And I think we understand that the land records need to go back as far as, as possible, you know, just for any disputes and family lineage.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Anyone else on this topic? Mr. Testa?
I'm assuming it correlates with the changing town government. Like, when we got into the current form of government, prior to that, you wouldn't have town council meetings, you didn't have a town council.
Right.
I was just a little confused. When you said, "We're not going to archive," I wasn't sure what you were...
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to keep all the records. So my thought was, do we want to digitize everything? So yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Do we want to digitize everything back to the sixties? Yeah, everything's going to be kept. Can't get rid of anything. Yep.
That's all I care about.
No, that's a good point.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Data.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, once they're digitized, the paper copies get destroyed, correct? Or no?
No, they have to stay in my office regardless, so digitize or not.
Okay, so we're keeping everything on paper, but we're also digitizing for...
Yes.
Ease of use. Okay. Yeah, I would be in favor of going back as far as we can, I think, just to keep it, like Council Regan said, sometimes with buildings and things, maybe we want to look back and see, you know, when one building was first built, it might go back to the, I mean, some of the buildings may go back to the sixties. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Anyone from the public? All right, moving on to number ten. So in your packet was the, the letter that the council has sent out. So this letter was sent out at the request of the council by the prior chairman to, to the not-for-profits, the social service companies that we, that we give money to. So I included the letter in your packet. I'm contemplating making changes to the letter, but again, it's a council document, so it's not, you know, really mine to fiddle with on my own. I think we've gone through some things recently, or a particular item recently, where I feel like we have a not-for-profit that probably didn't deliver what we had kind of anticipated they were going to deliver. And so, you know, my concern is, I kind of want to know what we're going to get from these vendors, or these, these, you know, not-for-profits before we give them the money. So what I'd like to do is alter the letter to, you know, it says "your agency's intended use." I'd like to make that language a little stronger, as in what it is, what is it exactly that we would anticipate, service that you would provide for the town, right? And so, you know, try to avoid the situation we have right now. You know, some of the things, if you look around town, you know, we all have friends in the different not-for-profits, and some of them contributions are obvious, some are less obvious. You know, we, we sort of subsidize burials at a public cemetery, and I'm not sure what, you know, what the taxpayers' benefit is there. You know, you could take a look at any sort of number of things. So that was sort of my idea, was to tighten up the letter. So I'm willing to hear suggestions, or if people are fine with the letter the way it is, let me know. Mr. Testa?
This would have to with any organization that receives money, including the youth leagues?
Yes.
Right, so everybody that's in those.
Correct.
Very good. I mean, I have no objection to this. I think, in general, it's what we've always pretty much had hoped for. I think over time, a lot of organizations, the little leagues, the different groups, we didn't really have to wonder, you know, what they were using the money for. We knew that if, you know, you didn't give a baseball, a little league group thirty-five hundred dollars, then they're going to have a, you know, they're going to have to raise that somewhere else, and families are going to be paying for it, or whatever it might be. And, but I think when we start getting into larger amounts, and organizations that have potentially evolved and changed, and have other funding sources available, it, it's responsible for us to at least know, you know, where they are, what they're going to do with the money, and, and see what, and see their budget. I have no, I have no objection to this.
Perfect. I mean, you know, in a perfect world, you'd almost have them sign a contract indicating, like, what are you going to deliver, right? And so you ask them. But that, I think, is, I'm not sure if the council alone, I guess I would have to talk to Janice, which I didn't. I don't know that the council alone could demand, you know, that they sign an agreement. Other comments on this? Mr. Farrell, I'm sorry, did you have?
Oh.
Okay.
Just going to make a note on what you said.
Sure. Mr. Fishbein?
I think that you should have some sort of a contract. It's sort of like the ARPA situation. You know, not to open up a can of worms, but I'm very distressed over the Columbus House situation, where, you know, they came to us and they asked for money in the budget, and ostensibly, I thought it was to render services for our town, and we have a unilateral decision to not operate. I got an issue. So, you know, at least if we have a representation as to what the money is going to go for, and then, you know, we see it wasn't used for that, we use that in our future deliberations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm totally in support of the letter as written. I would ask that we consider going further, though, as far as the information requested. For instance, and I echo my other councilor's sentiments about intended use of funds, I'd like to expand that to the impact of the funds if they're not received, as well as what happens if the funds aren't used. Is there a mechanism where we do not provide them funding in the future years consideration, or is there a clawback mechanism? And I know that's a lot more difficult. Some of the things in the letter that are kind of ambiguous is the most recent bank statement with account number. That doesn't go far enough. Many non-for-profits, especially the larger ones, have numerous bank accounts, have endowments, have any number of different resources, that they can either show us that they have a big pile of cash, or are barely scraping by. So I would like to extend that to most recent financials. And the financials for that organization, audited financials may be too cumbersome for an organization like the Little League. But something that they can represent is what the organization uses. It gives an idea of what's going to payroll, as far as what their accounts receivable consist of, and what their payables consist of. I'd also like to know if there's external contractors that are being used, and if that's something that the town can either absorb, or is that something that we should be putting out to bid ourselves and managing? There's a whole series of things about cost effectiveness of services, et cetera, that I don't think we want to go down in this iteration, but I, and I'm going to say something that's going to get a lot of groans. Why don't we put a lot of these organizations to a similar test that we did with ARPA? You know, and those types of, those types of requests, affirmations, and perhaps presentations even, something that ARPA wasn't allowed to do, of those would give us a better insight of what community impact, et cetera, are. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tanna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Council Regan in regards, one of my notes was about the bank statements. I think we need to go further with that. When we say a most recent bank statement, that could be just a checking account, they could have a savings account, endowments. I think financial statements would be a good idea. So I agree with that point. I also wonder if we can ask, maybe add to this letter, how much ARPA money they received, and when, and how they use that. I think that some of that is still maybe underway, so I think it would just be nice to see how much of that, because that was taxpayer money also. So maybe we add that just for a year or two, you know, at least this year, while that's still winding down. I'm in favor of asking what services they're providing the town. I think, you know, it's kind of tough. We're, the town is, all these nonprofits in town, obviously, are doing great work, but we're not a philanthropic venture here. So this is taxpayer money, and I think for me, when we give money to these nonprofits, I want to make sure that the services the town is receiving back, and the taxpayers are receiving back, are a better service than what the government could provide. And I think many times they are. I think a lot of times, these nonprofits are doing things more efficiently, or for less money than government could do. And so in that case, I'm all for what we give them. But if not, then I think we need to look at that and make sure that we're receiving the services that we think we're receiving for the money that we're giving. So I definitely agree with your point, Mr. Chairman, of making sure that we know what we're getting for what we're giving. The last thing, I also think we need to look at the amounts, and we're, you know, we're in the first full budget of a new administration, and I, I know a couple of years ago, there was an instance where a nonprofit came at budget season and said that they were losing their state funding, and they weren't going to be able to survive unless we gave them more. I believe they used to receive thirty thousand, they asked us for fifty. And I remember at that meeting, we said, "If you do get the state funding, what would happen? Then would the taxpayers of Wallingford get that money back?" And they said they would consider that, giving the money back, they would see what they would do with it. They did get the state money, we didn't get the extra money back, and then that heightened amount, the fifty thousand, became their baseline in future years. I did question that group last year of, about that, because that was the year after that had happened, and I didn't receive a satisfactory answer, to my recollection. So things like that, I think we really need to look at, and just make sure that what we're giving is worth the taxpayers' money. The other thing I would like to see in the letter, if everyone else agrees, is any other benefits they're receiving from the town. So some of these nonprofits receive free rent from the town, for example. I can think of two off the top of my head, where we're giving them free rent, or we're letting them use our buildings for free. So I think that needs to be, I know, you know, when we do our campaign finance disclosures, it's kind of like an in-kind donation, right? So I think that should be disclosed also. If somebody's receiving free rent or other free services from the town, that should be noted also. So I would just request that we maybe add that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. Counselor Testa mentioned this earlier. I mean, in addition to the other money that you're referring, like Counselor Tanna is referring to, and these are like the three-thousand-dollar amounts that go to Little League, et cetera, right? I mean, these are the, or the smaller, it's not just, I don't want to conflate what happened with the shelter with, like, what Little League does. And I don't necessarily know that everybody who receives this money should have to go through the same level of, I don't know, scrutiny, only in particular because certain organizations that apply for this money are largely run by volunteers, and like, using, I'll talk about what I know. I know about the soccer league. Soccer League for years has donated its time, its money, and its, its money to the fields, to the goals, to the nets. So a lot of the times, the money that these organizations receive goes into their operating expenses that provide services to town. Now, I'm not trying to disagree that we shouldn't get financials and all these other things. I'm just wondering if, could we have a minimum standard for what we require, or some sort of tiered kind of example of what we should require? Because if you're asking for, like, say, operating expenses of thirty, or sixty, or a hundred thousand dollars, that's vastly different than asking for like, an annual grant of three to six thousand dollars. It's a different thing. It's money spread out across more people, or some people. So I don't know if we need that level of rigor for everybody that receives money from the town, although I'm not going to, you know, say that we need less information. I think what's in the letter is appropriate. I don't think that some of the suggestions people are making are inappropriate. I just don't know if your garden variety volunteer-run organization's going to be able to pull all that stuff together in like a dossier that's sort of being described by the council right now. I think that if you had a minimum standard of what is required, and based on the minimum amount that you could request, I think that would be helpful and beneficial. I think a lot of the people who are filling out these paperwork, we can talk about ARPA, a lot of people who filled out that paperwork weren't grant writers, they weren't professional writers, they were just people who were applying for money. This is no different. So I just want to keep all of that in perspective, that while I totally agree that we should vet every dollar that goes out the door that we, you know, allow people to use, I don't, and again, I was upset about what happened at the shelter as well. I just don't want the two issues to kind of overlap into one thing, because an organization being contracted to do something is different than us providing a stipend or an amount to an, to an organization that provides, you know, flag football, or what have you. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Counselor Reynolds makes a good point. So I think if you look at the budget, and the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the money comes from two places. There's the social services that comes from the YSS budget, and then there's the, the Rec Department has money that goes to like the little leagues and things. I think the Rec Department has, and I don't speak for them certainly, but I think what they have sort of testified to in the past is that where they see a need of service they don't provide, like Little League or soccer, whatever, they have grants available, you know, for them to keep Little League and soccer going. So I guess I'm less, to Mr. Reynolds' point, I'm sort of less concerned about what soccer does with the money, because you see the kids playing soccer, right? And you know how much soccer costs for you, when you have your kids playing soccer. So I guess I'm more concerned about the other side, where they sort of get like a block grant, and we don't really know, you know, once you get the block grant, it's gone, and there's really not much accountability for it after that. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that, you know, we're fifty percent of the equation here. So ultimately, the, you know, the mayor's office can kind of give the money to whomever they, they desire, right? And so we can ask all these questions, but, you know, I think it's appropriate to sort of inform our discussions, but I think there's, you know, we're only part of this, part of this equation. I'm sorry, Mayor?
Yeah, minor clarification. The social services contributions page includes more than programs that go through youth and social services. It includes the Wallingford Center, Inc. facade grant program, and similar programs to that. So it's, it's just a little broader than your social services.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could we not exempt sporting organizations? Is that something within our purview? I mean, who we send this letter to is our choice.
Hundred percent.
Right? So, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure that anybody here would say Little League for thirty-five hundred dollars needs to come up in front of us and do something, and perhaps put a ten thousand dollar threshold. You know, if any sporting organizations are above ten thousand, I think we would be aware of it, but let's, you know, let's kind of narrow it and make it easier for them.
Counselor, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Getting excited. But Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I agree, and I would advocate for the tiers of scrutiny. One bad experience shouldn't have to ruin it all for everybody. And it was a bad experience. I'm not diminishing that by any means whatsoever. And going forward, I, I don't think we need anything different to change how we decide to fund them this spring. But if we need to implement or change something now for this next year, so that there is a more of a battlefield opportunity, ongoing communication, or inability to fund what we paid for, or render your services, then you should communicate that to us instead of just going silent. I would also ask, you know, like, when you watch The Price is Right, and they talk about, you know, you win a car with California emissions, that's kind of like, that's the stricter standard, right? So we should probably coordinate either with the mayor's office, or if we have a stricter standard, then going into their budget request for town funding, they should have that upfront, versus him, the mayor's office, granting them money, and then they're gone, they're on our schedule, and then they have thirteen days to scramble around and put together a more stringent request or packet, if it happens to be more stringent. So I would ask just that we coordinate with the mayor's office in the initial request, or give them as much time as possible to put that together. Because I know the budget will come out at the end of the month, beginning of April typically. So you probably have not requested everything that we've talked about here today of, of the agencies, and not that a couple of them couldn't put it together, but if we are creating new standards, this would be something that I think we should work in conjunction with their initial request for.
If I may.
Mayor?
We're, we're already gathering this information. I seem to recall that, that this letter used to go up from the council at the end of the calendar year, in anticipation that, you know, we'd be looking for this information in February or March. But, you know, I'd ask the clerk to check, to see when, you know, prior to this term, when on the calendar that letter went out.
As far as I know, since I've been here, it's always been, they have to give us the information that is required by the end of March.
That, that's, that's the timeline, but I thought the letter from the council went out earlier.
So the letter from the council, I can't speak to before I was chair, last year definitely went out about this time, but may have been, you know, may have been delayed for prior practice, certainly. You know, I'm also sensitive to the fact, and to Mr. Laffin's point, I'm also sensitive to the fact that, you know, at the end of the day, like, we could scrutinize all these groups and then decide, you know, we could, we could cut things out of the budget that ultimately get funded, depending on the decision of the administration, right? So I, I hear your message about the coordination with the mayor's office, and I think that's probably appropriate. Maybe this, I'm getting into this a little late, as a result of the situation we had recently, right? I think, before we go to Counselor Fishbein...
I have one more thing, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's just that we should also keep in mind that this is, this... No, it's just that we should also keep in mind that this is, this percentage of the budget is, could be written off as a rounding error. We don't give as much as we could or some would argue should. So I know we spend a lot of time, because it's important, what are we giving, what other organizations or partnerships are we forming that we are allowing to expend taxpayer dollars for? But it is a very small portion, very, very small portion of the budget. And I just want everybody to think about the amount of time that we spend on that very small portion of the budget versus the impact that it will have compared to the much larger sum. Thanks. Sorry about that.
No, I appreciate, appreciate your thoughts. If I had my druthers, I would say that we would have a certain amount of money that we were going to spend towards philanthropic purposes and then decide where the money goes from there as opposed to sort of the method that we've done in the past, which is like we sort of have the groups that we always, you know, fund in perpetuity. And before we go on to the next person, so I think, so in terms of the refinement of the letter, I think, so this is, this is more discussion than I had anticipated on this. I think what I'd like to do is have maybe three members of the council to sort of look at the letter, and we can kind of finesse it, and we'll bring it back to the next meeting with sort of the final language. Is anyone else interested in assisting with that? Counselor Regan? Anyone else? I guess it's just me and you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. All right, perfect. Mr. Fishbein is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think part of the intent of the letter is to ascertain the impact. That's the reason, you know, I'm the one who brought this to the council many, many years ago. This isn't just one bad experience. The thing that triggered it was the mayor had given, the old, the former mayor had given an appropriation to an entity, and then I went and got their 990s, and I saw that the money that the mayor gave to that entity went right to the leadership of the entity. It didn't increase anything for our town, except maybe keeping leadership of the entity on the entity. I don't know that that's the intent here. I don't think you send out different letters because at the end of the day, we have a duty to make sure that the appropriation is appropriate. You know, not that, well, I know one of the sports teams, you know, the utilization is like 15% Wallingford residents. I mean, is that really what we intend? And, you know, Maridin doesn't do this. I don't believe Cheshire does this. You know, so we've got youth from other towns engaging in the activity and we're subsidizing. So, you know, I, from my perspective, if an entity has, let's say $50,000 in the bank and we're giving them $3,000, I mean, how are we impacting that entity at all except giving them taxpayer dollars? So that's why I want to know. You know, if you don't get this money that you're looking for, you know, our kid's not going to be able to engage in your activity, you know, and then I'm going to take that to heart. I'm going to tell you, I heard something about grants. There's never been a representation to this council that that money is used to give grants to children who cannot engage in the activity. What we had heard at one point when Mr. Russo was up here as a counselor, because he was involved in the Little League, was that they would use the money to pay for the insurance because they had to have the insurance in place before the year started. But my argument to that was, okay, well, then people are paying to engage. At some point during the year, you're reimbursed for the money for the insurance, you know, so is it a pass-through? How much money do you have in the bank? That kind of stuff. That's the kind of stuff that I think we have to look at. Yes, many of the entities, they are small amounts, 3,000, $3,500, but at the end of the day, I think it adds up to 40 grand. You know, there's some people in this town that make less than 40 grand a year, and now we are. So I don't agree that certain groups should get certain letters, maybe certain groups should get different scrutiny, but I would want to know what is the impact, as the letter generally says now, on your entity if you don't get the money. And I want to be specific, you know, if you're going to go belly up and you're not going to be able to engage in this space, I think that's important. But if you've got, you know, 50 grand in the bank, then you're just, you're banking the money that we're giving you every year. You're not enhancing in any way, shape, or form. I did suggest years ago, not that I want to go there again, but we sort of, I sort of heard it a little while ago, that as part of the budget, we put $50,000 in the budget, and then we have people ask the council for grants. You know, which is sort of like the ARPA thing all over again, which I don't want to ever relive. But, you know, I just, we have a duty, you know, at the end of the day, when somebody calls me up and says, well, how come you're giving 3 grand to this group? I want to be able to answer that question. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Tada.
Thank you. I have a question for the mayor about the process. So how does the, so just for the benefit of the public, we receive the mayor's budget and these are already in there. So how does the mayor's office determine who's getting this money in your budget? Is it just whoever received it the prior year or is something sent out? How does that work?
Most of it's historical. And then there are nonprofit agencies that approach the administration for assistance.
Okay, so the administration doesn't send anything out prior to the budget?
Imagine if we did.
Right, well, that's, yeah. Okay. Okay, so would it be possible then for us to send this letter once we see who is in the mayor's budget? Or to Counselor Laffin's point, is that not giving them enough time? Well, I mean, I guess that's for you, Mr. Chairman. Would it make sense to wait until we see who's in the mayor's budget receiving the money? Because we're not going to add, well, I mean, I guess we could, but we typically wouldn't add anybody to that. So could we wait to send this letter based on who's in the budget?
I mean, I think, well, you could send it whenever you want, right? But so the issue becomes then, so the mayor gives us the budget April 1, and then we're going to start having the budget hearings not that, not too far after. So we're sort of, our time is sort of, we have to vote on the budget, it's like the first week of May. So your time is sort of compressed. So if you start sending out letters, you know, April 1, then, you know, you give them two weeks to respond, now you're really on a crunch to make decisions.
So what happens if there's somebody in the mayor's budget who has not been in the budget before, who we've never given money to before? Then we would give them this letter at that point? If we notice, oh, hey, this, this group was never in there before, but now we didn't send them a letter because we didn't anticipate them being in the budget?
I'm not sure that I know how to answer that. I'm not sure if this has come up before where there have been numbers of like a bunch of groups added late in the game. And then even then, so let's say that a group was added and they got the letter and we didn't like what was in the letter, and we take the money out of the budget, you know, it's up to the administration whether they want to fund that from another source, right? So, because ultimately, you know, we have, we can sort of adjust the numbers at the end, but we can't dictate that this group does or doesn't get it. So I think my thought was more about bringing sort of exposure to why the, you know, sort of the decision-making behind this kind of stuff and just sort of doing our due diligence to make sure that it was appropriate.
What about the converse of that? So if somebody, so we, let's say the council sends this letter, and then the mayor decided they're not getting money this year. How does that work? I guess then we would just tell them.
Well, if they're out of the budget, they're out of the budget, right?
So they would send us this information and basically for no reason, anticipating they're going to receive money that they're not receiving.
I mean, I would assume that if you were to apply for a grant with the town, that you would have to submit some kind of, you know, the historical groups aside, if you were a new group, I would assume that you would have to present some kind of evidence as to what your request was for. So I was, so by way of example, I was approached by someone that was looking for money that had spoken to the mayor, that had a program that seemed to align with sort of our goals for the social services, and they were like, well, what do we do? And I'm like, well, you know, the mayor's sort of the first step, but if they agree that it's, you know, the council can't decide that your line item is worth it, worth it or not worth it, but we could kind of, you know, decide whether we think as a part of the total budget it was appropriate.
Okay.
So I'm trying to be careful here to have a letter that I think is appropriate to get the data we're looking for without, you know, trying to be the mayor, you know?
Right, exactly. That's, exactly. Unrelated to that, but the sports leagues, I vaguely recall, wasn't there an instance either last year or maybe the year before where a league we were giving money to had a large savings that we were unaware of and it came up during the budget process? It sounds vaguely familiar to me. And I'm only, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot with recalling that, but to, in regards to what Counselor Reynolds was saying, I had to, I don't really have a problem with Parks and Rec putting in their budget that they're giving a few thousand dollars to this league or that league. And a lot of the leagues do work on the fields and they, they give back a lot. So I'm fine with that, but I do want to make sure that we're not giving money needlessly. And I do recall there was a league that we were all kind of shocked, they had this massive savings account that nobody really knew about, and we were giving them money. So I do think we want at least some of this information from them. I wouldn't want to just assume that they don't have money and then we're giving them money and then we find out later that they did because we didn't ask. So I still think I would want to send this to them. And then just one more thing I thought of that I would like added to the letter if it's okay. If we're going to ask for financials, there would be a line that would show payroll, but I think that's important because I know a lot of times, maybe more so nationally, but I think it could happen locally also, there's executive directors or there's payroll that's a massive amount, and you think you're giving money to this charity, and then you find out that the executive director is making millions and it maybe wasn't as charitable as you had anticipated. So I think one of the points we might want to add to the letter is, if not payroll, maybe specific payroll line items of staff and who's making what. And I think some of these nonprofits, it's probably, they probably have those documents because I think there's a tax document that they all have to file. Yeah, the 990, is that it? So maybe we just ask them to submit the 990 if they're required to file it, and then that answers a lot of these questions rather than us enumerating all these individual items. That might be an easier way to do so. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, those are good thoughts. Part of my concern is like, if you look at, so if you look at Columbus House, though, I'm sure they have a pretty good-sized budget because of the scope of the company, right? And so they have a lot of people on staff, again, because of the scope of the company, they have all these other funding sources. So when we talk about, you know, like needless giving, you know, like you could, you know, there's a disaster, you give money to the Red Cross, it's like a billion-dollar organization, I don't know if it's a billion-dollar, but it's a big organization. And so, you know, you expect that your money's spent a certain way, but it's still a big organization with a lot of staff, right? So I don't know, it's, I think you can kind of create a conundrum if you start looking at like too much of what there are. Like what do we, my thought was more linear, like what are we going to give you and what do we expect to get for the money that we gave you, whether that's the whole or a portion of the, of the funding? But anyway, those are sort of my thoughts. Please.
So I guess it might be harder with the larger ones, but I think the local ones, if we're giving a group $50,000 a year and then we see on their, their payroll, that their payroll is $45,000 a year, well, I think we need to look at that and assess if that's a worthwhile cause or not.
Your point is well-taken. I mean, if what we're paying for is salaries or rent, like that's kind of a different conversation than like a program. So, Counselor Fishbein.
So, perfect world in my mind. The letter should come from the administration and the chair of the council because it's really not fair to the council for the mayor to like blindly make a decision. I want him to have, or her maybe someday, to have the opportunity to review the backup and to make the decision instead of us getting the backup like after he's already made the decision, he or her, to make the decision, right? So that's where it should start. And then, because essentially the mayor's budget is presented to us with backup, you know, this is what I propose and this is why I propose it, you know, agree with me or debate with me, and then we can make the adjustment. So, I mean, I think this administration's a little more kumbaya with us a little bit. So I don't know if the mayor's open to that. Hey, come on, that was a compliment.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to receive that. So, but, you know, having been through 14 budgets before these two, the administration presents the budget to the council fully aware that the council's going to scrutinize it and...
But my concern is that we then have information that you more than likely didn't have in your deliberations as to whether or not you're going to approve that. And then it's almost like it's a disjointed sort of system. So, I mean, is there some objection to the letter coming from both the council and the mayor? The stuff gets submitted for the, to the mayor for consideration. The mayor approves or disapproves, whatever, puts the backup in the notebook, right? Which is, we all deal with the notebooks. And then, you know, then this council is examining the full decision that the mayor, the administration made in its budget deliberations. I mean, I don't know if that makes, doesn't make sense.
Here's my objection, is we are two separate branches of government, right? So ultimately, the mayor could choose these groups depend on whatever criteria he deems necessary, right? Whether, which may be different than our criteria. So if the letter goes out in the name of the mayor and the council, sort of implicates that the mayor and the council both consents to the content of the letter. Like I can, you know, take a vote of the council and we can agree on an item, right? But I can't sort of contrive the mayor to agree with our perspective on it. We get one vote on the letter. So I, to me, the separation of the different branches of government would dictate that we don't send the letter out as, you know, he could send his own letter out and we could send a separate letter or just deal with his data, but I don't think we can do a joint letter.
Well, I think you can do a joint letter if you come together. But anyway, the problem is, let's say we get the backup after the decision's already made, and there's a bank account, there's $500,000 in it. And then we're forced with saying, well, mayor, why the hell did you approve this? Did you know they had all this money in the bank? And then the mayor's saying, well, maybe, maybe, maybe if I had known, I would have made a different decision. Why put him in that position? Why just have all the information at the beginning?
Well, I guess, I mean, really, it's not up to me, it's up to the mayor whether he wants to be a part of our letter, right? But...
So I will say, the majority of the agencies or entities that appear on the social services budget are vetted by somebody in some way, shape, or form, one of the department heads or otherwise. So, you know, it's not that we're proposing to the council that you just throw money at people. So there is some level of vetting. You know, as I sit here, I don't...
So has Park and Rec asked all of these entities for their bank records? Have they ever?
I know...
I've asked that question before.
I know that Park and Rec is verifying that they are 501(c)(3)'s, and I'm, as I sit here, I don't remember whether or not they're asking for financials from them.
In my experience, and I've been up here a long time, I don't think they've ever even looked at the backup that we've gotten because usually the backup comes after the budget is put together. So, you know, I can't think of any of those entities that... Anyway, that's the way it should work. But anyway.
All right, any other, any other comments on this topic? Members of the public? Mr. Commerfer?
Bill Commerfer, Broadview Drive. It reminds me of the time where Councilwoman Tada brought up, and correct me if I'm wrong, about the Board of Education. Once you give them a certain amount of money, they can do whatever they wanted to. And if my memory serves me correct, you had questioned the Board of Education and said, look, we gave you the money. Now you're coming back and you're telling us that this wasn't done, even though we gave you the money for it. But the way they're structured, once they get the funds, they don't even have to answer any questions. That's kind of like what I'm seeing or read about or at least perceiving was the Columbus House. And Counselor Regan, I can't thank you enough for what you did with your organization and you and your wife. Point of the matter is, is that why did it take so long to get to that point? We have public safety, we have this. Why didn't somebody call in the middle of September and say, hey, we're on deck, right? We're all good? We're going to be opened up? Because now I have to question as a taxpayer, what do they do with the ARPA funds? Or you start looking at different things because you thought that they were doing the right thing. Board of Education, you got your money. Then you find out that they didn't do what you gave them the money for, so it raises more questions. And when you have an organization that you're giving my money, my money, to, they should answer the questions. I don't care, it's nice that Counselor Reynolds brought up the $3,000 and so forth. That's an easy answer. You know, no one's looking, you know, at every little penny or returnable can that they did for fundraising. It's, once somebody gets the money and they don't want to answer the questions or be accountable for it, but they just keep asking and asking and you have no idea where it's going. It's problematic, at least for me. And at the same time, once they get the money, and they don't have to be accountable... And at the same time, once they get the money and they don't have to be accountable for it, how do you know how that money is spent and it was for their, either their mission statement? And one of the interesting things, I don't know how much you guys ever read 990s, I'm pretty familiar with them. But one of the most important things to me at least, especially with some of these nonprofits, I don't care if they're 501(c)'s or 13s or whatever it is, you have to check off if you have a conflict of interest. You'd be surprised how many, that they don't have that. And you have to wonder why. Because those would be some of the ones that I'd be inquisitive to as to, hey, you know, is there, if they don't have a conflict of interest statement in their bylaws, then it opens up Pandora's box even more. And again, I think that regardless, that there should be some type of scrutiny. One of the things that concerns me is Mayor Savoni said, well, to Counselor Tada, imagine if they all did, meaning the list. What happens if I had a 501(c)(3) and I wanted to get on the list? Do I have to have the secret handshake? Do I got to be part of the good old boy system? How do I get my thing on the list because I want $150,000? Because I see this thing and they're kind of suspect, but I'm never even invited to be on the list? Or, well, you've got to jump through all the hoops. So, I would rather have as many people that really need it and they can prove that they need it and they're actually doing something than the other ones that don't want to answer any of the questions. That's only my position as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? All right, no vote to be taken on this one with no further items on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.